Welcome everyone to the June 30th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and everyone at home. And we have a really important and thoughtful work session today on the Human Rights Commission work. City Manager?
Thank you Mayor. And before I introduce Holly, and then she'll kind of facilitate us through the meeting, just a reminder that tomorrow Chief Groves will be taking the oath of office for Springfield as well. You might remember he's going to fill in as their chief there for a while. And so that'll be tomorrow morning. And we'll send out any particulars in case you just happen to have opportunity to stop by there. It's not a formal, it's pretty informal.
Springfield or Eugene?
Springfield.
In Springfield?
In Springfield, yes. It'll be in Springfield. No, I think it's Station 3 out there. But we'll send you the particulars on that for tomorrow morning if you'd like to swing by that. And other than that, I'll introduce Holly. And she's with our Human Rights Commission staff. And I'll let you sort of set the stage and I'll back away and the Commission members can come up and join you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Thank you very much for the opportunity to meet with you today. We have two agenda items today from the Equity and Human Rights area. The first one is the Human Rights Commission Annual Meeting with you. And after that, we're going to go over the Hate and Bias Incident Response for the second portion of the work session. So I'm the staff to the Human Rights Commission. The Commission is joining you today for the annual work session between the Human Rights Commission and City Council. Every year, the Commission meets with Council to report on their work and talk about shared goals. The AIS and memo from the Commission Chair captured much of the past year's accomplishments and achievements, and also introduced some initiatives and focal areas that the Commission will be looking at in the coming year. And we also included some interesting findings from outreach that the Commission has been doing in that memo as well that might be of interest to the Council. So be sure to catch that in the Chair's memo. Just to provide a reminder, the City Council approved a two-year work plan for the Human Rights Commission back in February of '09. So we are at the midpoint of that two-year work plan today. And so we'll be talking about what we've accomplished already in that two-year work plan and also what's still ahead. And also, the Equity and Human Rights work area visited you back in November. And we also talked about several key priorities of the work of our entire work area. And the Human Rights Commission has been pretty crucial in accomplishing a lot of that work as well. So it's been a pleasure to staff this Commission. They're an incredible team and they're just working with them so closely. I've observed that they're very compassionate and extremely active, very intelligent, and very inclusive of diverse perspectives. And I've certainly learned a lot working so closely with them. So I will introduce Linda Hamilton, the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. And she'll continue kind of through the agenda of the work session and the other Commissioners too to come up.
I think Linda's card is way over there, so maybe she'll want to put it in front of her wherever she is.
Yeah. There you go. Perfect.
Happy to see the City Manager for a little bit.
It looks good.
You look good there.
It looks good there.
Sorry, John.
I'm comfortable with it.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Thank you all for being here. I really appreciate it. I'm Linda Hamilton, the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the Commissions at the table with me today. We have
Eva Bardslow.
God teacher.
Tony Gatto.
Melissa Mona.
Welcome to you all.
We also have Commissions who are not here with us today and acknowledge them as well. There are so many people to thank and not enough time to do them justice. But we do want to acknowledge the Mayor and our City Council Liaison, George Brown, City staff, our many community partners, and the many community members who tirelessly work with us on the human rights in our community. Today's presentation will be in three parts: reaffirming our Commission, our Commissioner's mission, sharing some highlights of our work of the past, and we will leave plenty of time for questions if you have them. I want you to know that we are a highly motivated, unified Commission dedicated to human rights and our mission. We have accomplished much with your support and look forward to working in closer collaboration with the Council in the coming year. Our mission is to work so that everyone has the opportunity to share the full benefits and responsibilities of living in Eugene. To this, we are committed to ensuring that human rights are a central part of every city program, reflecting and respecting cultural and individual diversity, fostering mutual understanding, and promoting inclusively justice and equity. A lot of really great work is going on, and we are excited to share some of those highlights with you today, starting with Melissa.
So Goal 1 for the Fiscal Year 10-11 Work Plan was to increase Human Rights Commission effectiveness, efficiency, and accountability in responding to and aiding in the resolution of incidents of discrimination and harassment. And to that end, we have continued to meet the needs of community members and any community members who experience incidents of discrimination and harassment. We've done that in a variety of creative ways and collaborative ways. Staff can directly respond through information and referral to many complaints that come in. They're also very proactive about advocating informally to connect individuals with other advocacy organizations that already exist in the community to prevent redundancy. Some members of the Commission and former HRSS ART-trained individuals are still active and available for referrals of appropriate cases. And Linda and myself both currently have cases we're working on. We are continuing to also explore additional proactive and effective approaches to responding to emerging issues. We have been, we are very grateful for Chief Kearns's constant desire to collaborate with us. And he has been a huge part of that collaboration. He's really reached out to us individually and as a group when appropriate, and created a lot of time and space for us to work together when these things happen. So he's had a real open door, and that's been a great boon to this effort. We continue to work with the Citizens Review Board. I am the liaison to that organization. And we continue to reach out to them. And of course, Snow Fontas is the liaison to our organization. So we have an open flow of communication. And we've already had our work session with the Police Auditor earlier this year, and that was very helpful to us in understanding how that newer structure helps. Finally, we're continuing to explore other conflict resolution opportunities in the community to take advantage of any available training or resources to us at the least cost, often for free, drawing on each other's expertise. And we have decided to continue the visioning process around the HRSS mission through the E&amp;O Committee, which Mr. Beecher is the Chair of. So we're very active and continue to be very active in that goal.
At this time, we would go ask for some input from Matt on Goal 2, Community Anti-Hate Crimes.
So our second goal on the work plan for the Human Rights Commission is to promote relationships and build capacity between the community and the Human Rights Commission through collaborative work on human rights issues. And we had the opportunity to work with the Police Commission, the E&amp;O Subcommittee, and the full Human Rights Commission on a collaborative project that came about roughly December, January. We had some emerging issues around bias crime in the city and just bias conversations. And we decided to act to that, and we collaborated with not only the Police Commission, five of their members, three of our Human Rights Commission members, and three E&amp;O Committee members. But we worked with the FBI, the Department of Justice, ACLU, University of Oregon staff, the Office of Institutional Equity and Diversity up there. We put together a public forum over at the Baker Center, whose goal was to provide the community with education and awareness around hate crime and hate speech, and also identify resources for prevention and response in our community. The outcome of our efforts, about two months of meeting on Saturdays for two hours every morning, or every Saturday morning, was to get together about 80 to 90 people from the community who came and listened to panelists, again, from the Department of Justice, ACLU, Google, and the Coalition Against Hate Crimes Network out of Portland. And we had a really successful event. What we ended up with there was some great answers from our panelists around certain issues we had asked about. But then we broke up into groups with community members, staff members, Commission members. And we had four different groups that talked about what kind of response we can have in schools, what kind of response we can have in the city, what kind of response we can have in the legal areas, and basically how that works. An important aspect of that that we covered was the Human Rights Commission as a whole put together an anti-hate resolution, which we worked on and drafted. Tony did a lot of work with that, and we brought that to the community and got their input to make sure that we were hitting things that the community was concerned about as well as ourselves. And that went over very well, and we're still working on moving that forward.
Thank you. Goal 3, Accessibility Committee.
Lorraine. Hello, everyone. The Accessibility Committee has been meeting and trying to come to some advanced outreach and some of the activities that are happening in our community. I am now sitting on the pedestrian and bicycle plan. We're looking at the service dog issue, and that is moving forward because Lane County and the city are talking together on mutual language and working towards addressing some of the issues in the In Vision Eugene Plan, trying to make sure that accessibility is kept to the forefront of those discussions. We've had some good input from community members regarding concerns about audio issues with traffic signs and the ramps with the road construction projects that are going on. And there's also been some conversations around accessibility issues with the downtown area that have been fruitful, I think. But there's also more to discuss on making sure that people have access, but also that we don't forget about folks who are homeless and their issues.
And the fourth goal, the Human Rights Summit. Tony?
So Goal 4 of the Fiscal Work Plan was to support the Human Rights Summit. And this event was a collaboration event with the Community Coalition for the Advancement of Human Rights. The year planning for this event consumed more than 60 community members, including the Commissioners. They had six goals for this event. One was increase awareness of the human rights framework and its local relevance, include all groups in the conversation about human rights, especially youth. Another was to educate on what the City of Eugene and Lane County are doing for human rights here from community groups on pressing human rights needs, encourage discourse about ways to implement human rights framework in the local government, community groups, and area institutions, as well as move the City of Eugene forward towards becoming a human rights city while developing a broader human rights community. The overall participation in this group was well beyond what they had expected. The April 8 event, they expected about 60 people, and over 100 people attended. And then the April 10 event, they expected about 150 and over 270 people participated in that event. They had international speakers, Shivi Soak and Chandra, I'm going to say it wrong, Baknagar, I think is his name. Additionally, the workshop sessions covered a variety of topics from environmental justice and human rights to shelter, food, as well as effectiveness of steady circles on race, just to name a few of those.
Thank you. And at this time, we'd like to begin our question and answer time. We'd like to know how the Council and Commission can improve communication and collaboration. One specific example is that we provided in your package today, I hope you have it, the Council and Commission buddy system. And this system was intended for us to provide some efficient means of communication between our groups. And did you not have it either?
Yes.
Okay. We have mixed results with that effort, and we're open to alternative ideas for communication. We're reaffirming this commitment. So at this time, we'd like to talk about this and any other items you have, or questions you may have for us.
I just want to thank you all very much. I want to thank you, I know we all want to thank you for your service and your commitment to human rights in our community. And you've had a lot going on. And I'll just make a few comments. I would be personally, and maybe it's not in here, just interested in trends of complaints and what you're hearing. So I think that gives us a sense of what people are concerned about in the community. So I'd love to hear more about that. I'm really pleased that you are finding you're working well with Chief Kearns and relationship with CRB and the Auditor. Looking forward to seeing the anti-hate resolution and the work that we're going to be talking about later today. And I want to thank you for your work on the access issue. I guess my only thing about that, and I feel that you're doing this, I just want to know more about it. There's access in terms of for people with various abilities and disabilities, but there's also socioeconomic access. And so I'd like to hear about how you think about that kind of access as well in our community. I think it's great that you had a good, excellent turnout for both of the events that you put together. And I guess the only thing I would say, and you know this from working with me before, but I'm always interested in hearing from you as we work through the things we work through on a regular basis as a Council. When we're, to me, when we're talking about things like some of the tensions between various needs downtown, and we're trying to figure out how to do that the best way possible, it would be nice for us to hear from, hear your thinking to help us as we think about it. So that's just, I mean, actually, those problems, we may have been walking the thread pretty well on some of that downtown, but it's not resolved, and there will be much more of it. And so your help in helping us think about it more wholly, I think, would be something that we would benefit, because we do care about people being able to move freely around the community. We care about people being able to have their businesses do well, and we care about the rights of all the people of our community. And we know that some of the things that are not being met for community members are evident in our downtown tensions. So I just encourage you to let us hear from you on those. And that could be as simple as we discuss this, and this is our thinking as of this meeting. Thank you. Anybody else? Chris?
Thanks. I really appreciate the work that you do. I mean, if you look at our vision statement, I think the very first sentence is really our commitment to the notion of human dignity and human compassion, the importance of people in the community. We, as a Council, can't know everything about everything. We create bodies such as this one and others in order to inform us, to provide us with your opinion, your guidance, and your counsel. And I think that's really the most critical component of our relationship, is you have the ability, and I'm building on what the Mayor's already said, to take important issues, to study them thoroughly, to be thoughtful and deliberate about what kinds of options and courses we should take, and then to give us your counsel. That's, I think, not only the benefit of these kinds of meetings, but I think the buddy system is also very good for that reason as well. And I will be more diligent about being a good buddy. If we want to be buddies, that's really the secret to doing it. So I value your goals, I value your work, and I value the ability for that to inform and to guide us. And so it's important to not think that it's that because we don't focus on it all the time, that we don't give it the importance that it's due. We invest that in you, because you are our partner on that, and you will give it the time that we know you will, and then you can help guide us in our deliberation. So this kind of work is critical. It's great, and as we all say, we appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Mayor. I want, I too want to say thank you to all of you for the hard work. Having spent a couple of years on the Human Rights Commission, I enjoyed the work tremendously. I know how important it is, and I know how many hours as a volunteer you spend on it and where your heart has to be in order to do the work. And so I appreciate that very much. I want to answer your question directly. I, like Chris, haven't been the greatest buddy. Ibrahim Hamid is my buddy, and he's reached out to me on a number of occasions and looked for an opportunity for coffee. And I haven't had the time I wish I would have made for him. So I will recommit to doing that, so that we have better communications. But certainly, he's done his part, and now I suppose it's time for me to do mine.
Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree. Thank you all for all the work that you all have done. I also have been a Human Rights Commissioner, and I don't know if I serve as the liaison or not since I've been on the Council. I don't think I have. But if I did, I've forgotten. So I'm really glad for the work. I know, like Mike says, the amount of work that it takes to do this, and you guys are volunteers. So some of my comments might not be perceived as very thankful, but I really am. And I also have a passion for social justice, and I do that, you know, that's my passion. And so first of all, before I get into that part of it, is there a way, Lorraine, maybe you can help us with this? We get complaints in the Council chamber, and I can't think of a way to test that for people who are not hearing well. And so I don't know if there's something that we can do as a city to look at that. I know at times we'd offered folks hearing apparatuses, but I mean, I don't know. It's just a challenge. So if somebody could think about that, that would be really great. So I'm concerned because of the recent events that the Commission has had in itself. And I'm just curious if one of you can speak to your version of intercommunication with other Commissioners. Recently, you know, we had a gentleman who came to us and spoke to us about his dismissal, and then he actually quit. And that really concerned me. And I had meant to call him and talk to him, but I just hadn't gotten there to hear his versions of it, you know? And I kind of checked in with staff a little bit, you know, not the staff, I think I talked to Michelle one day. So I'm just curious as to what you guys' ideas are about people who are, you know, I don't want to label anybody, but you know, part of the makeup of the Commission really isn't to be everybody in unison and singing kumbaya, in my opinion. It's an opportunity to bring people with different types of opinions together and learn new skills from each other. And so I'm just curious as to what, you know, how you guys work with those kind of folks who maybe aren't on the same page as you all.
I can speak to that.
Okay.
And Andrea, I think I served on the Human Rights Commission first with you.
Okay.
So I have some shared history in terms of the traditional expectations, minimal expectations of conduct. Our recent issue with that particular individual was not in any way around the content of what he had to say. It was not a criticism or a reaction to his opinion. It was specifically based on our working group agreements that we'd worked very hard on at multiple trainings and work sessions, and also the city-sponsored trainings around the expectations of someone sitting on a Commission. So our recommendation to Council was based solely on the process or method he chose to use to voice his issues. The voice is welcome, and we made a very thoughtful, transparent, and carefully deliberative discussion over a lengthy period of time after reaching out individually as a group to try to make that clarification, to try to say, hey, we want to discuss these substantive issues, but the means that you're using to discuss them is counterproductive, not only to our body, but to the city as a whole. Please talk to us and come to agreement again and revisit our agreements about how we use email, and when and why, and how we meet together to talk things over. And it was an inability to come to agreement repeatedly about the process he used that led to our recommendation, and in no way reflective of, we all have opinions
Absolutely.
But of our opinions of a group as to what he had to say. The voice was welcome, the method used to voice was not sustainable.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, Melissa. I appreciate your comments. Does anybody else?
I would like to comment to that too. As the Chairperson, he was my co-chair. And our individuals' conduct and behavior while serving in a capacity as the Human Rights Commission speaks loud for itself, and it says a lot to the body here. And we try to collaboratively work together. And I welcome any of you City Councilmen, when something comes to you from us, when we have taken the steps and followed the bylaws according to what's given to us to follow, to please, if you have questions, contact us. We can have a closed section, we can do whatever. But this gentleman was the co-chair, and I think the conduct just went overboard according to the City Council's orientation that you guys provide us for being on boards. We have to follow those.
Okay.
And so we can always study those and review those together if need be. Any question, please come to us.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you for sharing that. So that's good explanation. If anybody else wants to say anything, I'm going to think a little bit more, Mayor.
I just wanted to, I don't circle around that and say, we're going to look at that in terms of the uniformity of how we respond to things on all of our boards and commissions. So we have some way that we all know things are being dealt with, and I think that will help everybody. And so we feel that we've been remiss in that end, and we'll do our best to pick that up from this end. And you know, and I know that you feel this way too, that we feel that's a pretty serious thing. So it does rise to a level of concern. So we'll just have to be sure we build into that the contacts between us that kind of let us move through a process like that more easily together. I just want to, so we'll look at it, and we'll work together on it. So I just wanted to appreciate you for that. And, yes.
And so the only other thing that I would like to say is that this past year, you guys did a lot of really cool things, and I felt like I didn't get enough noticed. And so if you could, in your planning, if you throw out dates ahead of time, because I don't know about the other Councilors, but my calendar is usually full a month ahead of time. So when I get an invitation to come, and that's the only day that's there, and I'm already committed to something else, you know, I have to pick and choose as to what my commitments are. And I don't like having to do that. I'd like to be available. And that's what happened in the last two previous things that you guys had done. I'd already been committed. And so if in your planning, if you like, can remember to save the date kind of thing, or, you know, that would really be helpful for me personally to be able to attend the good work you guys do. Thank you.
And it actually is not that anything is unimportant. It's just if it's really important for one of us or more than one of us to be there, for whatever reason you think it's important for you to let us know that, because there may be particular ways you're aiming at, people with particular talents around the table that you think would be helpful in what you're doing, and that would be, that lets us know that you need us. And that's part of our partnership with you. So just want to invite you to let us know where you need us as a group or individually for things. Yes.
So the only other thing is, don't look at our, I hope you don't interpret our lack of response, our lack of not being at the events that you guys plan as lack of non-support, because that's farthest thing from the truth. I think that all of us understand the need for the Human Rights Commission and the work that you do. It just really is challenging with our calendars to try and be there. So I just wanted to clarify that. clarify that.
And I am remiss. I probably should have called on George Brown first, since he serves on the commission. And George, if you have anything you just want to say for the good of the order here, we would love to hear from you.
Well, we talked about this a little bit earlier, I mean, a couple sessions back in our process session, about how we just don't have enough, seem to have enough time to, when we, you know, do the comments from the councillors during before our work sessions about what's going on in all the meetings that we're attending. And I feel I've been remiss. I've mentioned human rights stuff a little bit, but never, but not in the detail that some of the, some of the issues deserve, and it's partly, but we all are in that same spot, because it seemed to be a similar concern for everybody. So I'm going to try to be, I feel like I've been remiss in that, and not really being a good liaison, I mean, the best liaison that I can be. So I'm going to try to improve that a little bit. But it's hard. You have three minutes. How can you talk about everything in three minutes? It's virtually impossible.
Following up on that, we are going to be looking, we haven't gotten to that discussion yet, but we are going to be looking for ways for some time to be built in for a little bit more in-depth discussion from councillors who participate on various city commissions and committees, so they have a more of an opportunity to talk about what's going on, because we typically do what we're doing right now, is we check in with each other over a long period of, with a long period of time in between. So if we can build into our council meetings a more time to talk and, for our councillors to talk in depth about what's going on, where they're serving, I think that will help inform us all and help with the communication, too. Anybody else have anything they, so I think what I heard people say is, some of them will try to do a better job of being in contact with their buddies. We invite you, as we're working our way through the issues we have, to just give us, if you have time to talk about it, to give us your thinking. I think what Chris said is really true. It's very important to us. We have a goal that we be a welcoming and safe city for everyone. And so that's everyone.
Thank you. I want to add to the comments you said at the beginning in regards to downtown and the human rights having input. Chief Kearns did have, invite me to the table as the Human Rights Commissioner, and I did have input in that, and I made the statements just such that it's inclusive of everyone down there, that we have to somehow make it a welcoming place for our community. And so I have, I was part of that, thanks to Chief Kearns calling me up. So thank you, and I will make sure we get you input.
Good.
And feel free to come to us and ask for input on issues that may come up on your agenda.
And I'd also say, George is there on a regular basis, but if there are times when you would like us to, some of us to come to your Human Rights Commission meetings or subcommittee meetings, let us know about that as well.
Thank you. Do we have anything else? Do you have a question?
Questions?
Yes, Matt.
I'm hearing buddy system, and I'm hearing some communication would be good, and I did actually have the opportunity of meeting with Councilor Pryor, and it was very beneficial. We talked a lot about the opportunities that we have to improve communication. And I'm hearing a lot of how, I'm curious what needs you all may have as to what type of communication would you like? Do you want us to be coming to council sessions, I mean, the chambers more often and giving you a three-minute public input part, or would you like us to try to get on your agenda, or is an email okay, or a phone call? Coffee, I know, is hard. I know we're all very busy. I think I'm busy. I can only imagine how busy you all are. So what types of communication do you think would be more useful?
George, you have an, you have an.
Facebook. Hotluck.
An occasional email or a phone call. You know, the phone I carry with me is the one I use for city business, so just, you know, check in once in a while with an email if there's a, see something on the horizon coming up, some hot-button issue that may present some real problems, you know, just say, hey, this is on the horizon. This is where we are in the process of dealing. Just, you know, just occasional check-in.
George is kind of a phone guy, right?
Facebook works for me, too.
Chris?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I think probably rather than to say, this one's better than that one, is to kind of say, use them all, because they're all, you know, the more communication, the better. I always operate under the basic rule of no surprises. I mean, that really is a good fundamental policy to operate under. So if, to kind of build off of what George is saying, if there's an issue that could be something that we need to know about, we might hear about it from someone else, or it might come up, or we might be asked by a reporter or something, if we know about it ahead of time, and that could be done by phone, or email, or letter, or whatever, I would think that periodically, we'd be going to actually sit down together. Doesn't have to be done a lot, but I think sitting down together face-to-face is a great thing to do. But in between those times, it never hurts to send an email, or to send a message, just stay in touch. And those are easy things that don't require a lot of effort to maintain that communication. But I think no surprises is probably the best kind of basic rule to operate under. That comes from our side as well.
Eddie, Jennifer, any, okay. All right. Well, thank you all very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to move into.
I don't think he's there. I didn't hear him.
I never heard him check in.
No, I don't think he called in.
It's a letter you want to write.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. It's a buddy.
Yeah. What's he doing?
Thank you all for your hard work.
The next work session item is the Hate and Bias Incident Response and Anti-Hate Resolution. The manager.
Thanks, Mayor. And this is another one of those important conversations we need to have. And I know Holly will make a brief presentation, and the chief is also here to provide some information and data.
Okay. Here we go. So I know council has discussed these issues extensively in the past, but we are particularly here today because you requested an update when the bias and hate incident response protocols were developed and produced. So here we are today. This work session will provide information to you about the recently developed bias and hate incident response documents and work we've been doing. In addition to orienting you to the response protocols, we hope to share other important work being done by our community stakeholders around bias and hate activity. And you've heard a little bit about that from the commission just now. And we're all working to create a community that is safe, inclusive, and welcoming. Today's presentation includes an introduction to hate crimes, brief introduction. It's a very complex issue with a lot of breadth and depth, but we're going to do a brief overview for you. Introduce our hate incident response. The Eugene Police Department will also talk about their area of law enforcement with hate crimes. We'll briefly introduce more about the anti-hate public forum that was conducted, and go a little bit more in-depth into the anti-hate resolution, and then look for your feedback. So Eugene's work around hate response has always been significant and quite successful. The community and city organization has consistently built upon and exemplified some really fundamental best practices in this area. The city already demonstrates a very strong and consistent leadership commitment. There is often a very sensitive response to incidents. We're very consistent with messages, valuing diversity and inclusion. We have strong community partnerships. We communicate a lot about hate and community safety in general. And so here we are today, and we're going to present the coordinated plan and the resolution, which is just kind of continuing on that spectrum of best practices. And I just wanted to note, as we look ahead, now that we have a systematic plan in place, the next step we'll be doing is conducting outreach for reporting. The exercise of documenting our practices and procedures was another step exhibiting our strong commitment in this area. Eugene will continue our tradition of leadership in the field by memorializing and sharing our organizational protocols around hate response. Publishing our coordinated plan ensures that our organization has developed a legacy of materials so that we can reach a broad audience efficiently, particularly across the city organization. We can train and inform others. We are prepared for transitions in staff and in the city organization. And we can inform our community of our priorities and response with a coordinated message. Our response plan can easily be adjusted and applied to other agencies, and it'll serve as a resource for any audience. And we've already heard feedback from our public forum that other agencies, particularly in the DHRC, are interested in this plan and will use it also as a prototype to work in their organizations. So we're just continuing that spectrum of best practices. So development of the incident response plan achieves a DESP action item, which this response plan will add to the body of great work that the DESP is generating in our organization, and it'll reflect our breadth and depth of actions that support our broader visions of diversity and equity. Also notable is that this DESP action item honors a request that was put forward by the Community Committee on Race, and then subsequently moved forward by the Council Committee on Race. And when I was looking back at the archived materials, I saw that Mike Clark was the champion for this action item, so I appreciate that he's still in the council today to see it brought forward and accomplished. So as I mentioned, I'm going to do a brief overview of hate crimes. One of the first distinguishing characteristics to note is the difference between a hate crime, which is criminal activity, and then non-criminal hate activity, also known as hate speech or hate groups. Hate crimes are often referred to as bias crimes and include any criminal act against a person, group, group of people, or property that's motivated by bias or prejudice. And bias crimes can include all types of crime, ranging from telephone harassment, graffiti, property damage, physical assault, murder. Non-criminal hate activity are biased or bigoted acts that target a group of people, but are often protected by free speech, often called hate speech. Some of these that do not include crimes are going to be familiar to you, rallies, offensive signs or T-shirts. Legislative referendums are sometimes considered aggressive or biased legislation and other initiatives. We see leafleting and flyer distribution and group meetings. These things are not crimes, but we consider them hate activity, particularly when associations with violence against a certain group of people result from these non-criminal activities. It's important to clarify that attempts to regulate free speech in groups face substantial constitutional hurdles. And I know you all, many of you, were in a session where hate speech was addressed by the city attorney and the staff back in November 08, I think. So you've been through that territory quite a bit. But it's also important to clarify that Eugene police and law enforcement do not involve themselves in non-criminal hate activity. And a lot of that is left up to the community response and community messaging about an inclusive and safe community. There are many important roles in responding to hate. As we already mentioned, investigating hate crime belongs to law enforcement, prosecuting hate crimes goes to attorneys, but the role of facilitating a sensitive response is shared by you, local leadership, and our community. Specifically, the role of council and other community leaders. There are many ways to participate in effective response and also proactively in reacting to incidents. Communicating about the value of diversity and inclusion is something that we consistently do very proactively, and it sends a very strong message. Publicly speaking against bias, hate, bigotry, prejudice, violence, and intolerance is one that I've noticed, just in our responses, we often reserve that for when an incident happens. Then we speak out against intolerance and violence. Participating in specific incident responses by outreach to your constituents and the broader community, I know many of you have participated in some of the actions in particular neighborhoods, or with your, in your ward if an incident happened, by doing community leafleting, or a rally, or a vigil. So many of you are already participating in these ways. And also, there are times when we might prioritize vulnerable, targeted, or threatened groups. And I know we can also talk about several incidents where you have been very proactive and committed to messages about the safety, inclusion, and security of those groups. I just wanted to briefly paint a picture of some recent incidents that have occurred so you can really see the range and variability of hate crimes. Each of these incidents had a very particular response, sensitive to each situation, and it was largely determined by the victim's desired outcomes, and then matched with broader community education and outreach goals and interventions. So there was quite a dramatic recent trial where two young men were prosecuted for burning a KKK in the lawn of a man in late 2009. A Eugene mosque and elementary school were tarnished with hate graffiti in two separate incidents, but within a few days of each other. And then, many of you are aware of the LGBTQA office that was vandalized with a swastika on the carpet, and their equipment that they use in their office was also destroyed. So you can kind of see the range of some of them. All of these examples are property crimes, but the other significant category is crimes against persons, assaults, and harassment, and intimidation. So when the outreach was conducted to begin to work on this plan, many city and community stakeholders were involved in developing and reviewing the plan, and they continue to be very involved and invested in the implementation of the plan. In the course of the project, we discovered many themes that kept coming up that are associated with the work that had been happening in Eugene, and again, reflect best practices in the field. Consistently, the key themes on the left came up, that we want to reflect a strong commitment, we want tailored responses, we want to support the victims in the best way possible, we want to gain community support against intolerance, always protecting the integrity of any investigations, and then disempower and prosecute perpetrators if possible. So these priorities that were identified by all of our stakeholders involved in the project very closely match the key elements of effective response you find researching best practices. So there was not a challenge to match or to recreate the wheel. Our community, as I said before, was already really demonstrating a lot of best practices. The recommendation of key elements in hate response come from a very broad body of work, globally, really. But particularly, the resources I found that were most helpful were from the International Association of Police Chiefs, the Department of Justice, Community Response, and Southern Poverty Law Center, the Anti-Defamation League. A lot of affinity groups have hate response plans, and so I put all those together and then responded to our community priorities as well. So once the key players for the project were identified and identified their priorities, then we progressed to develop the resource documents that you were provided. You were provided a short form today, and again, this was responding to the DESP action item to have a tangible incident response plan in hand. The incident response has undergone several iterations of it, which I want to clarify, there have been questions, is it a plan, is it a policy, is it a protocol? Basically, we're just calling it our coordinated incident response and leaving it up to interpretation of what is it to you. But it's intentionally not overly prescriptive, but instead provides prompts for decision-making and practitioners. The categories of the document we created is, and our strategies frankly, are grouped into three main categories you see there: notification and coordination, the assessment of the incident and response, and then education and outreach. So we started with coordinating notifications and identifying how a lead would be determined for coordinating response. I feel like this part of our response plan really highlights the infrastructural starting point. As you see over on the left side, a hate crime occurs or is reported, police are notified, the Equity and Human Rights Center are notified, we log it to make sure we're tracking, then all the city leadership notifications happen, a lead person is designated. all the city leadership notifications happen, a lead person is designated who's going to be point for communications and facts and information, and then we pull together a team, we assess the situation, pull together a team, and then address the many aspects of it: the victim, the community, media, do we need to do any other outreach? That's sort of how the notifications and coordination happens. The next key aspect of the plan focuses on assessing the situation and developing the response, the sensitive and tailored response. This component of the project emphasizes the importance of sensitivity and unique responses to each incident and how the different considerations we take into account developing... Oops, there we go. This part of the response is really further detailed and articulated in a longer resource documented, document we created for practitioners in the field and first responders, and it's available through our office and our website, sort of the longer, how do you assess an incident and predict the impacts, and then create a response plan. The form you have is a short form with really the most critical information that was determined to be the most relevant to a broader public consumption and distribution. And then, there's a longer informative document for practitioners. Finally, the last piece is that proactive education and outreach piece, which started off with identifying the key resources in the community and stakeholders. This piece of the plan is aimed at building awareness, prevention strategies, encouraging support networks, and enhancing reporting. It includes conducting regular trainings on hate crimes, and like we featured, we just did a hate crimes forum, doing regular outreach to the community about how to report incidents and where you do that, creating safe spaces. So, the University of Oregon has a bias response team, our community has a Community Alliance of Lang County Calk Back-to-Back Program is where a lot of community members report incidents, our office, EPD, oftentimes, I understand people call the city manager's office too, and then direct things through the channels. Sometimes, we read about things in the paper. But, yeah, so there are many proactive things we do for education and outreach. Matt Beecher, the Human Rights Commissioner, really talked a lot about the Hate Crimes Public Forum. I thought it was important to illustrate all of the key partners, at least the ones that identified themselves that were present at that forum, that was focused on reaching into our community and talking about prevention and response, as well as sharing clear information about what a hate crime is. The forum accomplished many broad and specific objectives and involved many stakeholders and was very well attended. And we are still working on some lasting educational products resulting from the forum and have made some excellent partnerships and connections across the community and the region to sustain some new innovative initiatives. We're going to create a PowerPoint on what are hate crimes and how to report them and resources in the community for the commission's, police and Human Rights Commission websites. We'll publish our hate response plan. And then, we've made little YouTube video clips from the Hate Crimes Forum, so if people say, "What is a hate crime?", you can click on it and there's the presenter responding to that. So, that'll be a resource available on the websites soon, very, very soon. It's my next project. So, through all the education and outreach and the recent strategic efforts specifically, we've realized that reporting is just as important as coordinating the response. The U.S. Department of Justice put out this study not too long ago, in 2005, indicating that only about 40% of bias crimes are actually reported. And so, there's some situations and some conditions for people feeling safe in communities that we're not aware of. And so, by increasing reporting, it'll really give us a better picture of how to target intervention in our communities. So, a key outcome of the forum and other outreach has indicated that the next strategic work should be focused on educating the community about the importance of reporting and ways to do that. Now that the incident response protocols are in place, we feel we have the infrastructure ready to support more and improved reporting. It's been noted that hate crimes are seriously under-reported, and any improvements in reporting will begin to give us an accurate picture of problems in our community and ways to target our interventions. These quotes, by the way, in the italic quotes, that we need to work on strategies to encourage bias crime identification and reporting, and the quote that if we don't respond to hate crime and activity, we send a message to the victim and perpetrator that intolerance is okay, those are quotes from the forum, just put in to support the, but from our community members. So, at this time, Tony Giatso, a Human Rights Commissioner, is going to provide a little bit more background on the proposed draft resolution presented to you and highlight the collaboration that's gone into preparing it. And we're hoping today, just to remind you, for direction from council eventually to put it on your agenda to talk about and look at. So, Tony's going to briefly talk about that.
So, the resolution came from Not-nar Town, which started out in Billings, Montana, I believe, or Bozeman, I'm sorry, I might have one or the other backwards. But it was in a response to an incident that occurred in their community, as well as the whole town coming together to fight hate activity. And since then, we've seen it in a number of different communities around, including Portland, Seattle, San Francisco, all over the country that have done different things. And so, what I've been working on is a resolution that, for the city, to look at and hopefully pass. But we have brought it to the Human Rights Commission, as well as the Anti-Hate Forum. The police commission opened it up to community members to get involved and put their input in as well.
So, that is the resolution. We can talk more about that in the Q and A too, if you'd like. So, now, I'd like to lead into the Eugene Police Department roles. The EPD are our critical partners in this work, and we coordinate very closely with them. I've had the privilege recently of working closely with Melinda, who is really critical in helping prepare the plan and reviewed it extensively, so, thank you. And Chief Kearns is going to talk briefly about the aspects of the work Eugene Police Department works on.
Well, good afternoon. Captain Tilby worked with Holly to prepare this, our part of the slideshow. He planned to make this presentation to you, but unexpectedly had to be out of town this week. And a couple of important people that work for EPD that are involved with our work around HRC are Lieutenant Pete Despondy, who's over here on my left, who is our liaison to the Human Rights Commission, and Melinda Kletsek, who is our PIO that plays a pivotal role in ensuring that the right information goes from the police department to Holly's office. And then, Holly, you should know, has done an outstanding job in collaborating with us when a crime occurs and being very responsible with the confidential information that we occasionally need to share in order to paint a clear picture of what happened. And by all accounts, has done very good work with the community in the outreach that she's done. The control chart that you've seen, that you see in front of you represents bias crimes reported in Eugene between May 2004 and April 2010. And the upper control level of the number of crimes that occur each month is at 7.5. The lower control level is around 1. And the average over these last five years is 2.6 bias crimes a month. And you can see that, you probably can't read the numbers, but in April of 2006, we had a high report rate of between 10 and 12. And the experience we're having right now is that the reported bias crime appeared to drop in 2009 and has come back up a little bit in the early part of this year, and it's hard to tell at this point whether we're going to see a decline or whether reporting is going to continue to rise. But you can see in front of you here what the trend has been. We have provided, we do provide training every year, or nearly every year, on our role in receiving reports of bias crimes. This last year, an instructor from the Southern Poverty Law Center came and spoke with all of our officers about organized hate groups. And then, again, in in-service this year, we went over our policies and sound practices on investigating bias crimes. Our priorities are to make an effective intake investigation, and the evaluation of the crime that occurred happens both at the intake, when the patrol officer takes the report, and also when the violent crimes unit reviews it. They make a determination as to whether or not follow-up investigation can be done. And we have a high priority of following up on all bias crimes. If there's any suspect information or if there are witnesses that we can contact, we'll do that. As you probably know, in other crimes, some identity theft, just to use that as an example, even with suspect information, we don't have the capacity to always conduct those investigations. But with bias crimes, with very little information, we'll follow up on these pretty aggressively. And then, those, right after intake, those reports come to my office. Melinda Kletsek, the PIO, does some evaluation to determine whether or not we should make a public release of the fact that the crime occurred, but also ensures that Holly's office is aware of what crime happened and whether or not it would be appropriate to contact the victim. And then, I notify the city manager and each of you. In a couple of notable cases over the last two years, we've also done outreach on cases that involved broader, protected communities in Eugene. For instance, there was an assault that happened at North Eugene High School. Some African-American children were assaulted by a couple of racist adults. And then, the homicide involving a homeless person, where we worked the case pretty aggressively, but were struggling in the beginning to identify the offenders. We did some outreach, both among homeless advocates and others in the community, and both of those efforts, I think, informed good decisions that we made in the city. I could talk about this, but I think Holly would do it.
Thank you. So, we are available to answer questions about any of those things. I just wanted to remind you, some of our goals today were to possibly take a motion to put the resolution on a future agenda. You may want to think about requesting hate activity reports periodically that we could At what levels or different ways you'd like to participate in community response, and any other input or questions? I also just wanted to note that this is officially still draft until it has your input, because there might be some things to add in the messaging or information. And so, I just wanted to know, you're the, kind of the last key stakeholder group to put some thought into it and let us know.
Thank you for bringing this to us and appreciate the presentation. I think the work you're doing on the reporting part of it is really important, because we got to, no matter what door it comes in, we've got to make sure that everybody gets the information and it gets, and can act on it. So, I think that organizing the reporting and making the public aware of where the reporting should be done is really important. I always think that when I talk to people, they get confused about whether graffiti is crime or speech, and I think graffiti is crime if it's property crime, right?
That's right.
So, it may not be that the words are criminal, but the activity is criminal, because they are committing a property crime.
That's correct.
And it just happens to be a property crime that has a hate speech component to it, right? And it seems like when we're ready, it will be really important to make it obvious on our website what people do if they think either, we have to have a response to hate speech or crime, and they need to know which tract to take and make it easy for them. And so, I think maybe one of the issues that you're going to have to really be sure or clear is how you distinguish at the front end which of those funnels it goes through and how that gets dealt with for the general public. And I do, I know that a couple of years ago, when we were talking about this, we felt that we were, in spite of how good everybody was here, we were a little disjointed in our response. And sometimes, we'd respond quickly to hate issues, either crime or speech, or sometimes we would be kind of slow in coming about it. So, this feels really like we're trying to get a good handle on it. And I know all of us really want to be able to do our role in responding and help you do your role in responding, so appreciate this very much. Anybody else? Andrea?
Chris? Good work, Holly. Thank you for the presentation. It was a good overview of stuff, so, you know, it was very good.
It's definitely a big team effort.
Work team. So, I also agree with the mayor, sometimes in the past, it has seemed disjointed. And for me, I would like to know, you know, actually monthly, you know, and kind of the snapshot of how it's going. Because the incident in North Eugene, I don't think I heard about till I actually got some inside information from my nieces who go there. And I kept waiting and waiting and waiting to see, you know, if it was going to rise to the level of us knowing anything as a city, or if we were going to do anything. And I don't think that there was ever really any ability for us to speak to it, and that really kind of bothered me, because, you know, young people are really passionate, they want to see that their adults are really in there, you know? And I was just kind of, you know, I heard the police were involved, so I assumed that the right channels would be taken. And then, I talked with Carmen Urbina, who actually, so she couldn't talk about it, but she assured me that, you know, that to let it go its course and that things were being taken care of. And at that point, I just said, "Okay, fine." But I have a niece and a nephew who both go there, and so, it was really kind of personal to me, and I really kind of wanted a little bit more information. Not that I need more information than the average person, but I think that that kind of stuff does need to be aware. And I'm glad to see that we're going to have a coordinated response, because I do believe that people need to know where you stand on these issues. And I think we do a pretty good job when we have the opportunity, but, you know, sometimes to some communities, different things feel like that we should be speaking more about the situation. And if they don't see it, or if they don't hear it, you know, then they feel like we're not, or we're just not doing due diligence, you know, that we're not paying attention, or they feel left out. So, I'm glad to see this coming about, and I'm glad to see the resolution. And I don't know that, I'm not sure how the other councilors feel, but I definitely would, after legal looks at it, if they haven't already, make sure that, you know, we can put it on the agenda.
Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate the effort that's being put into this. And for me, these issues operate in kind of two realms. There's the acute, active realm, which is what we're dealing with right here. How do we deal with the active, immediate, acute issue of bias and hate crime? And I think this is an excellent move in that direction, because, you know, active intolerance has to be dealt with in an active kind of way. And so, I agree with the desire to keep us updated and how we can be active in our attempts to address that kind of active intolerance. The deeper issue, the chronic issue, the one that's much more cultural and hard to deal with, is the notion of, it's not active. It's, I guess, I'll call it selective tolerance, as opposed to active intolerance. And that means I only care about the things I care about, and I don't care about anything else. That is a fertile soil in which intolerance can grow. Because if I don't care about it, then that's that, you know, by not saying anything at all, you're condoning it. And you can't pass a resolution to fix that. We have to create a culture where we have to care, where you are no longer able to just say, "Oh, I only care about these things and I don't care about anything else." I think selective tolerance can be more, can be as sickening, if not more sickening, to a community's health than active intolerance. So, I think we really need a strategy to deal with both. I'm going far afield from what we're talking about here, but I do think the two topics are related. And I think, I believe we should put this resolution on our agenda.
And I think, I believe we should put this resolution on our agenda as a way for us to begin to approach the active intolerance, but it shouldn't diminish our work, and the Human Rights Commission can be very central to that, as well as the Police Department and others, in how can we deal with the cultural issue of selective tolerance, the ability for folks to say, "Oh, I don't care, therefore I'm not going to pay attention and it's not important." It is important, and we won't change the culture that allows intolerance to grow if we don't deal with it on both sides of the issue.
I'll just add to that and say, I think tolerance is better than hate, but I think embracing diversity is better than, and important in both, and so I think you create a better community by not thinking that tolerance is enough. It is better than not being tolerant, but what we really aim for is understanding how much we benefit from all the folks that are part of our, of our community. I always get a little bit of a twinge over the tolerance language, because it just makes you feel like you're holding your nose and putting up with it, as opposed to really understanding the value of all of us. And in terms of the motion I'm going to ask Counselor Taylor to put on the table, the only thing that I would say about this one is, I would request, and this is certainly up to council, but I'd request we don't put it on the consent calendar, I request we put it on the calendar. I think if you're going to do this, the whole point is to say it to the community, and for us just to nod our heads and nobody even know it happened, doesn't make sense to me. So I would request that we simply put it on the calendar.
Really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I just wanted to comment, Mayor, you know, I was just at the Naleo Conference, and I heard a speaker, and it really was, kind of resonated with me, because he said that, you know, and when you look at civil rights as a whole, that like in the 50s and 60s, you know, people got the rights, and it became, it was a battle, but it came, like, people had the right, even though some people didn't feel that they deserved it, and then, you know, all the way to the 80s and 90s is when you have tolerance that were coming forward, and now, you know, in the year 2010, we really need to be embracing. And so, and I just kind of thought that was a nice way to kind of look at how culturally our world has changed, and, you know, with projected population growth in the communities that it's growing, there's going to be a majority-minority, you know, in 20 years, and that's not that far, you know, I may not be here, but a lot of the young people that we're setting these rules for and trying to set the tone for, they're, that's going to be their reality, and it's going to be a different world. And so we definitely, I mean, and I think about the things that this council did in the 60s, like the housing policy, where they don't allow all the low-income housing to be in one part of the city. I mean, I didn't know those people, I had no idea, but what good sense that made, and so I hopefully will, we will hopefully do some things that people will look back and go, "Oh, they had some good ideas back then", so.
Counselor Taylor?
Want to put the motion on the table? Do you want me to do the motion, and do I get to say something after?
Or vice versa, whichever one you want to do.
Well, why don't I say something first? I have a problem with, with the whole concept of hate crimes. I think all crimes are probably hate crimes, they certainly aren't love crimes, and I think we should care about the rights of, not only of every group, but of every individual. And I also think people have the right to be, to behave badly, as when I hear the Human Rights Commission excluding someone because they didn't like the way a person behaved, that disturbs me. I, I think back, you're talking about the 60s, back in the 40s, I wrote an essay which was published in the National Publication of Sigma Tau Delta about the danger of becoming intolerant of intolerance. And I think that we, I don't have a copy of it anymore, but I was thinking then about, because I was so concerned about being tolerant, and I thought, you can go to extremes, you can say, "Everybody has to be tolerant of the way I am." But I will put the motion on the table, but I am concerned about saying that a crime is worse if it's directed against certain kinds of people than if, I'm still very concerned about the young man who was tasered at Willamette and Broadway, for example, that's an individual. And I think about the kids on the streets who are told that they don't belong there. I will put the motion on the table, however. I move to place the proposed anti-hate resol, I better get my reading glasses, I move to propose, place the proposed anti-hate resolution on the next city council, well, you, on the next city council agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. I think there's six of us, six in favor and none in opposition, it passes, thank you. I guess the only comment I would end up with is, I think that we all are very concerned about the rights of everyone, but what civil rights legislation acknowledges are that there are certain groups of people who have been targeted over time, and we turn our attention to making sure that that doesn't happen, that's how that works.
And I personally invite any group, I mean, I, you know, I think about sexual assault, I mean, you know, that stands out too, you know, we've made statements about that in the past, murder, gangs, I mean, I think that any crime that, you know, comes forward to us, I believe that we would be wanting people to uphold the laws.
Absolutely.
And so I think that this is in that, in that vein.
Well, thank you all for your work today, thank you for coming, appreciate it.